Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Finance and Physical Resources Committee Meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, August 18th, 2015, and the time is 8:30 a.m. We preceded this meeting today with a work session at 7:30 a.m. to start our review of our 2016 budget process, and that will continue in future work sessions in advance of our Finance Committee meetings. We'll begin today with public comment. Is there any public comment? I see none, so we will move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt this consent agenda by Commissioner Vander Mullen? Is there support by Commissioner Borges? Questions or comments? I see none, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to Agenda Item 4, which is an action request by the Drain Commission.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve a release of easement to First Christian Reformed Church of Byron Center and quitclaim deeds to Slobey Drain Drainage District, Huntington Drain Drainage District, and to the Road Commission. In 1966, First Reformed Church granted a 10-foot right-of-way for construction and maintenance of the Lanting 199 Drain under the supervision of the Drain Commissioner. The easement was never used or required for drain purposes. The Drain Commissioner is proposing that the county release the right-of-way to the current property owner, First Christian Reformed Church of Byron Center. In 1967, Earhart Construction granted a quitclaim deed to the county on a certain parcel for construction and maintenance of drains by the Slobey Drainage District. The Drain Commissioner is proposing that the county quitclaim its interest in the parcel, which is an active drain, to Slobey Drain Drainage District. This will clean and correct the title record to properly reflect Slobey Drain Drainage District's property interest. In 1944, the county received lots 648, 666, and 667 from the state of Michigan. In a tax sale, the Road Commission requires lots 648 and 667 for right-of-way purposes and is proposing that the two lots be quitclaimed by the county to the Road Commission. Huntington Drain Drainage District requires lot 666 for drainage purposes, and the Drain Commissioner is proposing that that lot be quitclaimed to the Huntington Drainage District. Assistant Corporate Counsel has reviewed and approved the release of easement and the quitclaim deeds associated with these transactions.
Very good. Is there a motion, Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments? I am seeing none, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We next move to an action request by Facilities Management.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve an agreement in which the county, the city of Grand Rapids, and Michigan State University lease their North Monroe properties to Art Prize for exhibits and events that form acceptable to County Corporate Council. The city of Grand Rapids, Kent County, and Michigan State University are owners of adjacent parcels of property located on North Monroe Avenue in downtown Grand Rapids. Art Prize has requested to use these properties to host a series of exhibits and events, including concerts, ceremonies, and receptions that include the sale of food and alcohol during Art Prize 2015. Permitting and licensing of the venue and its activities are under the jurisdiction of the city of Grand Rapids, which is currently working with Art Prize and its vendors to ensure compliance with state laws, city ordinances, and local regulations. City officials contemplate that all permits will be secured prior to the event. Art Prize must also enter into a short-term lease agreement with each of the entities for use of the property. The proposed lease will provide for all required insurances and indemnification and protection of the property owner's interests. Once the permits have been secured, the lease document can be finalized. In order to allow planning for the event to progress concurrent with the permit and lease approval process, the Grand Rapids City Commission will be considering an approval of a lease subject to city attorney approval at its August 18th meeting.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve?
Support.
Commissioner Wapowski supported. Are there questions or any comments on this?
Just a quick clarification, if I could. Thank you, Chair. Which property are you referring to?
This is, there's property on North Monroe, just north of 196, that is owned, there's county-owned parcels, city of Grand Rapids-owned parcels, and Michigan State University-owned parcels. There's Quality Auto, it's across the street from Quality Auto.
Is it open?
It's a vacant. A vacant property.
Yeah.
So it's open space. It's open space, they'd need tents or?
Yeah, tents, they're gonna do some, yeah. There's no physical building.
And are we making any, are we charging them?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Wapowski.
Yeah, I mean, since I think I have tickets for an event that's gonna be there on October 3rd, I don't know if it's a conflict of interest for me to vote on this, but no, I mean, it's, yeah, so, it's, they're, yeah, Art Prize starts in a month, so it's, it's good that they're gonna have this all in order, and as county commissioner, good that they're gonna have all the proper insurances and all that stuff, so that our generosity doesn't come back to hurt us.
Right, so we're supporting Art Prize by not charging rent on it, but we are still, at the same time, watching out for our risks by having to get insurance and provide indemnification and so forth, so. Okay, other questions? I see none, so we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We next move to Agenda Item Number 6, which is an action request by Parks Department.
This is a request to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the grant of a right-of-way for a public roadway to the Road Commission. The Road Commission has rebuilt and relocated a portion of the public road, Leland Avenue adjacent to Dwight Lydell Park, after a portion of the old Leland Avenue has been decertified as the right-of-way. The survey that's attached to the action request illustrates the portions of Leland Avenue right-of-way swap of the old with the new roadway. The property of which the new right-of-way is required is owned by the county and is used for parks purposes. The Parks Department is agreeable to the Road Commission's request for a grant of right-of-way for the newly built portion of Leland Avenue Public Road. Assistant Corporate Counsel has reviewed and approved the grant right-of-way to the Road Commission.
Okay, pretty straightforward. Is there a motion to approve this? Vice Chair Hennessy, and I heard support by Commissioner Mast. Questions or comments? Mr. Coleman.
The parking lot and road configuration? Hasn't it been like that for a decade?
Yes.
Okay. So we're just getting around to it and making it official?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I'm seeing none, so we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We next move to Agenda Item Number 7, which is our report on the second quarter financial report, which will be provided by our Fiscal Services Director, Steve Duarte. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners. You all should have received the packet with the quarterly financial statements in. This represents the six months under June 30th for the 1231 funds and three-quarters for the 930 year-end funds. If you open to page four, I will highlight the general fund for you. As always, I'll start with the revenues and finish with the expenditures. The budget provides for a five-tenths of a percent decrease over prior year actuals from $160.9 million to $160.1 million. Year-to-date revenues are down 1.7% from $38.1 million to $37.4 million. Some of the significant revenue variances are as follows. If you go down the left side, starting with taxes, taxes have decreased from $2.37 million to $2.35 million or seven-tenths of a percent. This is primarily due to timing. No issues there, just when the taxes happen to come in. Moving down to reimbursements, reimbursements have decreased from $5.8 million to $4.4 million or about 24.6%. This is primarily due to the transition of some programs, such as township law, to special revenue funds. The impact over a total year was about $4.3 million, and this is about halfway through the year. Moving down to the other revenues, other revenues have increased from $2.6 million to $3 million or 14.9%. This is primarily due to timing receipts from the 63rd District Court. While we were going through the audit, the collections for the district court were being booked the month following the actual collection. They wanted the timing to match up with the period, so we are now accruing those revenues back. So in the previous years, where you may have seen two months for a quarter, you're now seeing three. No total increase in revenue, just the timing of how we're recognizing that revenue. Any questions on the revenues? Okay, moving down to the expenditures, the budget provides for a four-tenths of a percent decrease over prior actuals from $160.9 to $160.1. Year-to-date expenditures are down 1.6% from $73 million to $71.8. Some of the significant expenditure variables are as follows. The wage category has decreased from $27.4 million to $26.1 million or 4.8%. The primary reason for the decrease is a reduction in the number of personnel charged to the general fund due to transitioning some activities to special revenue funds. It's kind of the flip side of the revenue question we just talked about. The group insurance, the cost of group insurance category has increased from $4.1 million to $4.7 million or 14 and a half percent. Primary reason for this is an increase in the group insurance rates. The pension category has decreased from $2.4 million to $2.3 million or about 6.6%. The primary reason for the decrease is effectively we had no change in the pension contribution rate. It went from 9.30 to 9.31, so it's relatively flat. That coupled with the fact that we no longer charge as many employees to the general fund because that rate supplied to the employees' wages because of the move to the special revenue funds, kept that relatively flat and even declining a little bit. That, just a side comment, that's really good news, because if you remember, this Board adapted a closed amortization period to help eliminate, to help eliminate the unfunded liability over a specific period of time, and with that implementation, there was an expectation that costs would go up, but because of the positive market results and all that, we were able to hold a flat contribution rate while making significant strides towards closing that amortization period. In fact, it worked so well with the market, we now have no unfunded liability, at least for the current year.
Agreed.
Workers' comp category increased from .2 million to .3 million or 52.3%. This is something you've been seeing for the last couple quarters. Primary reason for that was the buildup reserves in the funds by increasing our internal rate. I believe we did that internal rate increase July 1 of last year, so as we go on the next quarter, you won't see this dramatic increase in terms of percentage for the workers' comp category. I also would say that for this period going on, that those rates should be fairly stable now. We are achieving our funding level that we have set up by policy, and we should be fine going forward. The capital category has increased from .8 to $1.3 million or 59.8%. Primary reason for this was the timing of the vehicle purchase for the Sheriff's Department. It normally progresses later in the year. We got those bids out very early this year because it was such a lag time on getting police cruisers for the Sheriff's Department, so, yeah, over the course of the year, that will level back out. We didn't buy more cars, we just moved the timing of when we push this down. Any questions on the expenditures? With the fund balance, we expect the 2015 year will end with a modest surplus and remain in compliance with our fund balance policy. As of 2015 budget, which is when we calculate the policy on the 40%, we stood at about 41.3%, but you have to, you have to watch that, because as expenditures grow, that 40% will be applied to a higher number, so we could actually see that reduce even though we don't have an operating loss or a deficit in the fund. So I just want to make sure you guys understand that. Any questions on the fund balance?
Any questions for Steve?
If we turn to page eight, I always like to discuss the cash a little bit. On page eight, total available to meet general cash flow requirements are down from $26.7 to $26.1 million. Cash reserves expressed in days of coverage have decreased from 42 days to 40 days. The actual cash in the general fund is up a little bit, but the demands for the other funds that we had, the front cash, is up by $3.6 million. Last year, at this time, we had about $5.2 million advanced out to help those funds while we waited for collections from the outside parties. This year is 8.8. That's one of those things that goes up and down from timing.
I was just gonna say, is that mostly a timing thing?
Yeah, that's mostly a timing. It depends on how long, primarily, how long the grantors take to reimburse us on our particular request. In fact, we just, we just got a letter from the state saying, in the childcare area, they're gonna, they're going to do a, I think the word was more exhaustive, review of our financial reports, but when I say "our" financial reports, I mean statewide, so that they expected that that would slow down our reimbursement a little bit more. So, again, between, between the cash burn of the collection of taxes not starting until July and August and the fact that we are at, well, I don't want to say this really, but I will, at the mercy of the grantors, when we get our reimbursement, we just have to have substantial cash pool to draw from if we're going to get through the year. If we turn to page nine, this graphically shows what we do with our cash flow. This represents the net number, net of all those advances that we have out. The line continues to be similar. As I've told everyone, I don't expect, unless a major change in policy or a major deficit or something that we don't see, I expect this line to follow pretty much this shape for the foreseeable future. I would point out that July typically, which is not in yet in this graph, is typically our low month. I believe last year, we got down to $25.3 million. Overall, between 15 and 14, or, I mean, yeah, between 14 and 13, we actually drew down an extra $2.7 million more cash because we had more cash advanced last year in July than we did the previous July. I would expect, because this is a little later than we normally do this report because of the later meeting, I have the advantage of hindsight. I know what the July cash is going to be. It's going to be about $25.6 million this year, so it's right in it, it's within $300,000 of what we were last year, exactly about where I would have projected it to be.
Steve?
Any questions on cash?
Yeah, have we ever dipped into that economic stabilization for any period of time?
No, I believe last year was the lowest cash point that we've had, and we didn't dip down into that gray area, but we got, we got pretty close last year.
Would that require some kind of action if it ever dipped into that?
I'm sorry, I'm missing it?
Would that require any kind of action by us?
No, it does not. What you're seeing there is all those shaded areas are what our, what our targets are, where the line graph is actually showing where our cash is. Now, if we wanted to draw down that, that, oh, let me see, if we wanted to draw down that gray area, to actually shrink it on a permanent basis, we would have to come back by policy to the board. Any other questions about cash? Now, I'll turn, and page 20 and 21 talk briefly about the Lodging Excise Tax Fund. Lodging Excise Tax Fund, year-to-date revenues are up from $2.9 million to $3.3 million or 13 and a half percent. It's not all growth. In there, we had a party that was delinquent on paying prior taxes, and we made a collection in May that skews that number up a little higher than an actual growth rate. I believe that the, the delinquent taxes that were received on that particular one was $148,439, so that's built into that number. We are expecting a growth irrespective of that, and probably the 5% range, maybe a little more, five to seven. We'll know better as the year goes on. We continue to monitor that monthly. We get reports from the Convention Visitors Bureau to let us know what they're seeing in there, and we've seen their numbers also, so we monitor it closely.
Go ahead.
Do we have any others significant delinquent accounts on the hotel motel tax?
Not that I'm aware of.
Commissioner Mast.
What was, what's the big increase in the charges and fines? We've got $150,000.
That was related to the delinquent payment. There was also penalty and interest and fines, so, yeah.
Now, is that, is that, is that one all paid up?
Yes.
The one that we were, we all know? Okay. That's good.
Yes, it's very good.
Yeah?
Not only for us, but also there was a delinquency that was owed to the experience of Grand Rapids as well.
Right, right. That must mean they're doing okay. Or they're gonna get money from their corporation.
They refinanced, went through a major refinancing and were able to reduce any issues related to obligations, so.
So just remember that next year, because the number's probably gonna be a deficit, we're gonna say, why is that down next year? So, it'll be the same issue, so.
Well, but Steve says it's still going up.
Commissioner Vander Mullen.
Kind of begs the question for me, do we, what kind of hammer do we have on these particular properties when they don't pay? Is it, is it a, is it, do we sue them or?
In this instance, let's reflect it on these statements, we did sue and take a judgment against that property owner. The treasurer lobbied for a change in the law that would allow counties to turn around and assess that cost in the same means as a delinquent special assessment, so that they could actually foreclose on a property. So there is much more incentive for those property owners to stay current.
Is that something that we ought to work with the treasurer on, or maybe we are?
It is something that would still require us to amend our ordinance in the future so that we could implement it, yes. So we are having discussions with the treasurer on it.
That would make it much simpler to collect, I would guess.
Yes.
Thank you.
The last thing I'd like to highlight in the fund, if you look at the 2014 actual fund balance, fund balance at the end of the year was $2.1 million. Our fund, excuse me, let me slow down. Our fund balance policy requires us to keep 1/12 of the estimated revenues for the subsequent year as a fund balance for operating capital, make sure the fund remains solid. Our fund balance policy would equal about $633,000, so available for debt service tucked away for the future at 123114 is about $1.5 million. Any questions on the Lodging Excise Fund? If not, unless there are any other questions, that is my comments for the day.
Commissioner Vander Mullen.
I'd like, I don't necessarily need to go back, but this, this whole thing with the pension and how we're managing that, that's no little thing. That's a, we've got to give credit to the, to the staff and the pension board. That's, we're doing it right, folks, and we need to keep doing it right.
I think that's an excellent point, and we appreciate efforts in that regard. Also, I think the pension fund itself is well-managed, a good manager that's involved in that right now as well, so things are very positive in that area. Not having any deficit in that, any underfunding is obviously pretty significant in our pension fund.
Yes, Commissioner.
To that point, has GASB rule on that, that those efficiencies need to be posted on financial statements, has that taken effect or?
Steve, has the GASB regulations related to pensions taken effect?
Where they post them on the financials, do entities need to post their obligations on pensions in their financials?
Oh, that, that takes, that took place at 123114, and we were, they're calculated slightly different on what the unfunded liability is, and so the unfunded liability was reflected this year, but even on the financial statements, with a more strict interpretation of it, we were overfunded in the pension system too. So instead of having a liability on our financial statements this year in the CAFRA, we had an asset. Now, let me warn you, that will swing from time to time based on the true market value of the portfolio. With the pension fund itself, to keep the contribution somewhat stable, we use four-year smoothing. That is not what you're looking at when you look at it for financial statements. They're saying, we don't care about smoothing, we want to know how much cash we actually have. So because we were, because our fair value of our asset was actually higher than our valuation assets, in other words, the smooth value, we received a little bit bigger bump in our funding status for the CAFRA that we had to show for the government-wide statement. Now, the other thing I need to put you on notice about, and I've said it before, but I'll remind you, the old PEP liability, post-retirement health care, GASB's gonna start looking at that. Expect very similar regulations, guidelines, reporting requirements for the old PEP liability. Now, unlike most communities in Michigan, ours, I don't want to say it's slight, I mean, $30 million is a lot of money, even to me. But relatively speaking to the other communities in Michigan, it's a drop in the ocean, okay? We were one of the few communities to start early on when the attention got to this subject. We started in 2000, we had our first actuarial evaluation, I think, in 2005. We actually set up an independent trust, a 501(c)(9) in 2007. We, we started actually making cash contributions to it, actually early funding that, starting in 2007. We have, and since 2007 now, accumulated about $16 million in assets in that fund. We still have an unfunded liability, but as they all have said to you and in his earlier reports and as he has instructed me numerous times, we need to come up with a plan to shrink that quickly, and we'll, we'll be looking at a closed amortization period. Right now, we're using an open, perfectly legitimate, but I think we're going to be required by the new GASCBs to take a look at during a closed amortization period. Like everything else, it's a trade-off. The sooner we go towards, the quicker our contribution rate will actually really go up a little bit, so we have to make sure we time it as, hopefully, as real estate values come up and allow us to have enough flexibility to make that contribution without having to force that contribution back onto everybody else because we're trying to force that contribution back onto everybody else, because we're trying to stay within our current resources.
Good point. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
For the board and for the excellent management of our county resources. We move then to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Okay, I see none, then we shall be adjourned at 9:00 a.m.